Meeting of Bryan County Council to order for Monday, August 7th, 2023. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. We'll start tonight's agenda off with the approval of the minutes from the July 17th meeting and also the July 17th joint special meeting.
I move to approve.
Second.
Judy? Yes.
Yes.
You?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the next item is a hearing of public concerns. Not seeing anyone come forward, we will move on to item number three, which is an ordinance. John, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 342023, an ordinance to amend the Bryan zoning map to rezone parcel number 063170002 from R2 to C3.
Counsel, good evening. I have been asked to give this PowerPoint presentation on behalf of Paul, Cheryl, and Brittany Combs. Unfortunately, they had a conflict in their schedule this evening. Before you is an ordinance to consider changing this property from an R2 to a C3. Previously, it was a C3 and was turned residential. This is the former home of Russ and Angie Davies, or formerly the Christmas Manor. Paul, Cheryl, and Brittany are excited to announce that they are going to turn this into an art gallery called Art Gallery 317. Again, we have a great arts community in Bryan, and so their intent is to have a downstairs gallery, as well as a place for creating art, also having private art exhibits, and inspire professional and emerging and recreational artists through opening drawing sessions and workshops. They also plan to curate a jury local high school senior and jury professional artist exhibit. Changes will mostly be, I can't say the word, aesthetic, changes to the exterior structure and property landscaping. There will be critical repairs to the back building's roof, there's some leaks there. They intend to have that space for more of, I think, framing and doing some large spaces for artists to rent. They are going to update the interior walls and trim, update the second floor for studio space, and the second floor will be Paul's personal studio space, so it will not have a lot of accessibility to the public. They are going to become ADA accessible on the east side of the structure. Downstairs, second bathroom, fortify the basement, while it is good, they need some permanent jacks to stabilize it, refurbish that back building for a gallery workshop, arts prep and framing, and then refurbish the remaining back building area for clean storage and maintenance. Again, the first floor will be for-profit art gallery and exhibit regional artists. The second floor will be Paul's private studio space, a gallery, office, and clean storage, and then the back building will be workshop space for the gallery exhibit and private studio workspace and storage. So this is a before picture of the north exterior. That is the changes they intend on the after, so again, just some landscaping, front door, they're going to put a little sign out, which I think looks pretty nice there, the Gallery 317, you can see at the front. And then the east side exterior, this is before, so what it looks like right now, and what they intend to look after. Again, that parking lot is already there, it's just covered with grass, that runs adjacent to the alley that is alongside Father John's microbrewery, and then they will have a handicap accessible ramp to enter in. So again, just first floor layout there, as I've explained, and second floor, some before and after pictures of what they intend it to look like, that'll be the front reception area, art studio. Again, they really like the character of the house, they just want to update some of the interiors. This is the back building, again, that needs some structural work, there's a few areas of the roof that need to be completed. So again, Paul Combs, Cheryl Combs, and Brittany Combs are the family that is taking this project on. We're pretty excited about it here, and I also, before we get too into this ordinance, I want to thank Russ and Andy Davies, they've had this house on the market for quite some time, and Russ is very involved with Bryan Development Foundation, and they were very conscientious of selling it to the right fit for our community, and really worked hard to make sure that it was going to be used in a good manner, and so I'm very grateful for that, because you know, obviously, that's their personal finances, and they were willing to wait that out and make sure they had a good fit for Bryan. And we have a lot of community members that are putting that kind of stake in our community, and when they do, we try to recognize them. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yep.
But it's certainly not in terms of, based on the folks that are at Paul and Cheryl, or the concept and what they're doing, I think that's all well and good. This is more like I generally have, which is a curious question. I noted that in their, they requested, I think it was in the planning and zoning ordinance, I think that's where I saw, I don't know where I saw, it doesn't matter. What I saw was they were requesting to be exempt from the DORA. My question is, is I just didn't, how does that even, how does that work? I don't know how.
Well, so the DORA doesn't go to them, it actually stops at the edge of Father John's, and so what they're asking is that counsel not make an ordinance to include them in the DORA. At this time, they don't think that's necessary. If they change their mind, as you know, probably six months after you guys originally adopted DORA, at the time, there were only a few things we could change about it, now it's unlimited, so if someone comes to council and says, "We want to expand here," that's something we can look into. So Paul and Cheryl were just asking that we not expand, they don't see a need for DORA, they don't, I think, they're probably going to see how this goes, I mean, having wine with art, maybe they just want to make sure that it would be the right fit, and they may just, personal preference, not want that ability. Again, if something would happen with the Bus Barn property, or the Arts and Ed, or we decide to extend that out, they also have the option of exempting themselves and say, "No DORA allowed." I mean, we have those stickers with the chambers, so every business gets to make that decision. But I think it was just a special point of, "Don't change your DORA boundaries, we're okay."
Okay, so, because I was thinking, kind of like what you were saying, you know, I spent a lot of time in Toledo, living in Bryan but still working there, and there seem to be a lot of different art galleries, et cetera, where there was various liquors and wine, et cetera, and I didn't know if they were like, not interested in that ever happening, or just not interested in that happening now. It sounds like the latter.
I can't exactly answer that, because we didn't ask that, but even so, like again, if there's future growth in that neighborhood.
We can cross that bridge.
We can cross that bridge when we get there, and then they can make that determination as well as whether they're in or out.
Sure, no, it's, that was my only, I didn't, I just didn't know if we had to make some, if we had to make some exemption, which we don't, that answered that first question, but if we did, how would that even work? So, no, I'm good, you've answered my question, thanks.
Okay, and again, the request is to turn this back into a C3 after it was turned residential for the Davies family. Again, when it was the Christmas Manor before, it was C3. The residents in the neighborhood were all given letters for that planning and zoning, no one had any concerns. I know, I've seen John Trippi, he's pretty excited to have that next door as a business owner.
Sure.
I think this is great for Bryan, it's got a great theater art area now, we're kind of having with Arts and Ed and the little theater that's being renovated, and some other areas in town, so for me, I think it was a good neighborhood fit. I'm really excited and grateful to the Combs for taking this leap. I mean, Paul has been on our fire service for a long, long time, so we're very familiar with this family, and very grateful that they're going to, hopefully, with counsel's blessing, put this business.
He's a talented artist as well.
He's very talented.
Very good.
And a book writer, children's book author, illustrator.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is an ordinance, John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 352023, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one and final for the project known as 2023 asphalt program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Asphalt program is complete, been paid out, we balanced out the quantities, and we are asking for a deduct of $6,279.90. I would request you suspend the rules and approve this, and we can get this project closed out for the year.
I move to suspend.
I'll. No, go ahead.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Henry? Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number five is another ordinance, please number and read.
Ordinance number 362023, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one and final for the project known as 2023 pavement marking program.
I would just say ditto, but it's the same thing, project's complete, items we didn't use or used extra, we balanced out the quantities, and it's a deduct of $7,073.10. I would request you suspend the rules and approve, please.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like those details.
Yep.
Usually not two and one, I think.
All right. Next item is a resolution, John, please number and read.
Resolution number 422023, a resolution to accept a $48,801 donation from Bryan Girls' Softball Association to the Parks and Recreation Department for Field Number Five Press Box Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Roughly about 2013, we started a major overhaul of the Field Five Girls' High School Softball Project. The last phase of that project is the press box, and this donation is to cover the cost of building the press box at Field Five for girls.
It's been fun to watch this progress.
I had to go back and look, I'm not very good with dates, so I had to go back and look to see how long we've been incrementally improving the facility, and we started the dugouts in 2014. So, within 10 years, we're going to have done a major overhaul of pretty much everything at the facility. So, it's very nice, yes, very nice.
Are there still sticking points with the press boxes relates to some federal or state regulations?
Yes, yes, we are.
There's still some sticking points?
Yeah, I'm scheduled to go to an appeal hearing at the end of the month for accessibility for the press box, but we have a partial to be able to get started. It will not, it will not change the outside structure, all that will change could be the inside and how we go about square footage on the inside.
And at one point, I don't know if this is still the plan, but at one point, it was going to go above the one dugout, is it?
Yeah, so it'll go on the third base side, the home dugout, right above, yep.
Nice. I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a nice little sum there.
Next item is an ordinance, John, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 372023, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring emergency. This ordinance simply appropriates the $48,000 donation Mr. Donovan just spoke about.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Next item is another resolution, John, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 432023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capitol Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
You're going to have two of these, we do these every year, when I apply for Ohio Public Works projects, they want legislation that's project-specific. This is, we're going to apply for funds to redo some sewer, sanitary sewers, South Walnut area, down from basically South Street up to Perry Street, kind of in the Circle K rear yard, sewers, sanitary sewers in the backyards there, and they're aging and need replaced, just like they do over a third of the town, so with that, I would request you suspend the rules and authorize us to apply for this.
Is there any difference between these, do they need to?
They need to be acted on separate, yes, because it's different project locations. Yeah, yeah, if you read through the legislation, there's the one section in there, section three, I think, it references what area they're actually in, so, yeah, correct. I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another resolution, John, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 442023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capitol and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
Same thing as before, this one is South Myers area, actually, South Myers, South Williams, and then from Perry to Wilson. Again, the sanitary sewers are in the backyards there, and really cumbersome, so we're going to apply for grant funds. It'll be between 500 and 650,000, somewhere in there, there's a sweet spot that we can apply for funds on, so just so you get a general idea, it'll be over half a million dollars, and we'll apply for 50/50 funding for it.
Will this be that burst piping?
Most likely, yeah. The first one probably will not be, because that's actually a paved alley, but this one should be pipe bursting, because it's grass and sheds and fences and everything else.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Next item is a building permit.
I have a building permit for powertrain components. Jack Nyhard is doing a, about a 26,000 square foot addition and renovation, over a million dollar construction cost he's putting in there, so field construction is doing the construction on that. I think we have final plans approved, and I know we started on the project for sure, this is just for occupancy, so I would request you approve.
I'll move to approve.
I'll, I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Next item is in regards to Halloween party. Mr. Dominic?
Good evening. Believe it or not, it's time to set the Halloween party dates and times. It's almost here.
When's the Fall Fest, let's just do it all. Is Santa Claus coming to town? Let's just hit them all right now.
A month later. We'd like to set Halloween for Saturday, October 28. We would like to do the community Halloween party at the ice rink from 2:00 to 4:00, and then the community-wide trick-or-treat from 5:00 to 7:00. I do believe the community trick-or-treat is a half hour longer, it used to be from 5:00 to 6:30, and I think we discussed.
Our proposal is to make it a half hour, two full hours.
Yeah, two full hours.
Yeah. Will it be dark at then, at that time?
I don't think it's seven.
It'll be dusky, but I just know, like, a lot of kids are still running around trying to get to those last houses, and maybe if we give them that extra hour.
Half hour.
Or half, we could go till nine, I mean, he doesn't love trick-or-treat. But, yeah, it was just something we thought we could try to give them two full hours versus that hour and a half.
If it doesn't work this year, we won't do it next year.
Right.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Rick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a public service announcement by Mr. Poole.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're past a year into the new legislation allowing consumer-grade fireworks, and I know last year we talked about some of the rules, trying to get it out to the public. Now that we've had a year to really look at it, and delve into what those rules were that were passed late July last year, looking back this year, we had, we had a few minor incidents, we had nothing that was major, more of just letting folks know what those rules are, trying to get that overview. I don't think we've got a problem where we need to specifically ban within the city, I think the state laws are perfectly good, but I just wanted to cover some of those and put it out in public forum, so we can really talk about what's there. First of all, what's not in the rules, stuff that used to be legal before, the novelties, trick noise makers, wire sparklers, those are not included in the fireworks regulations. What is there is the 1.4G fireworks, which are considered consumer-grade. They talk about a few different things, aerial devices, pretty much anything that's designed to launch in the air is an aerial device. Ground devices, that's stuff that's going to stay right where you lit it, it's going to go off there, that includes firecrackers, doesn't necessarily have to have light, it can be just sound. Fountain devices are a unique part, they've actually opened up the sales, retail sales for those, some of the larger stores were able to carry those here in Bryan. A fountain device is a non-aerial, non-reporting, all it's going to do is shoot the sparks in the air. It's ground-based, handheld, that can include things that are shooting, but they're out of the tube, it's not like a sparkler, it's not a wire sparkler, it actually has a tube that is releasing something like a Roman candle. Furthermore, then, we're talking about the discharge site, that's where that firework is actually discharged, the point of discharge, and that becomes relevant later into the rules. Spectator is any person other than the person that's lighting, again, definitions that help later in the rules. Days, this has been out for quite a while, and I wanted to bring this again today, because we're heading out for the first Monday of September, and Saturday, Sunday, immediately preceding that day, Labor Day, that'll be our next legal fireworks day, but these are actually a list of the days that are permitted by Ohio Revise Code to discharge fireworks during these times, specifically 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., except for New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, that goes over midnight into 1:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. Where they can be discharged, we'll start with ground devices, they're the least restricted. So you need at least 50 feet from spectators under the age of 18, so if there are kids out there, they need to be at least 50 feet from any firework. They double the distance from hospitals, educational facilities, some other hazards there, and then we get into 150 feet from multi-tenant occupancies. Our apartment buildings, apartment complexes, because of the greater risk of occupants, they've increased some of those areas as well. Aerial devices, this is probably the one that we're seeing more issues with, there really isn't a whole lot of room in Bryan to be shooting aerial devices. You need 150 feet from spectators that are under 18. You also need to be away from any building, 180, at least 150 feet. You need to be away from your property line, this comes up a little bit later, but the property that you're discharging on, the entire discharge site needs to be within the property that you have permission to shoot on. Again, it doubles for hospitals, educational facilities, and triples for those apartment complexes, so we get pretty good distance. Need to have at least 25 feet of any overhead of destruction, and make sure that it's not going to go flying into cars or any other structure when it lands. The fallout area has to be an open area, so you can't shoot into a wooded area, it needs to be open. Again, only on private property with the express authorization of the property owner. If that discharged site of 150 feet extends beyond the property line of the person that is given authority to shoot, it's not big enough, and you can't do it. If two neighbors go together and they have a big open lot, they could agree, both of them, that they've got 150 feet between them, and it's wide open area, it would be permitted at that point, but they would need permission of both property owners. So with our lot size, Bryan, I don't think there's a whole lot of places in town that have 150-foot radius in it, so again, aerial is pretty hard to find a spot for. Anything that's considered unsafe, hazardous debris falling into a spectator area, whoever's shooting is supposed to stop immediately, just until they can fix that unsafe condition. So if you've met any of those others, you need to stop. After they've done it, cleanup, you're responsible for cleaning up the debris. I did have one complaint this year about this, but it was not in town, it was one of our protected properties outside in town. Immediately after, so if you're shooting off during the day, you can see, go out and pick up your trash. If it's dark when you shoot, first thing in the morning, you need to get out there and get it picked up. Make sure that all of the debris is gone and dispose of it. Specifically things that cannot be done, anybody under the age of 18 should not hold, handle, discharge, do anything with any of the 1.4 fireworks. Can't shoot them off indoors, don't point them at anybody. Things that seem like common sense, it's spelled out. sense, it's spelled out in the law. Don't do that. And when they say any person, object, or structure, that includes emergency response personnel, animals, any, anything. Again, discharge in a manner that's hazardous to property or people, discharge in the boundaries, and this is federal, state, and local parks, forest, recreation areas, so you cannot discharge them in the park. It is prohibited by the ORC. You cannot discharge them on a public street or highway, or in an alley. That is one of the other things. And also on school property, it is also prohibited. Those are some of the big, wide-open areas, you can't do it. That's kind of true with locals, and I think if somebody can find the spot, they can do it. They're legally allowed to do so. Any questions?
That one on pointing, aiming, or discharging towards any person, that includes bottle rockets?
Yes, that's any, any Roman candle, bottle rocket, anything that's flying through the air, pointing it towards them is prohibited.
I was just asking for a question.
No, I understand.
Have you irritated any teenagers lately? Is that the issue here?
I understand.
And I think the largest takeaway is there, there really aren't, like, we could think of maybe a handful of properties within the city of Bryan where it would have given them the space to be legal. So we just want our residents to understand that, but it's not just, you can now shoot off fireworks anywhere in the city. It's, there's a lot of contingencies to that in state law, especially given the distance between houses and people. And we have seen some areas where they're shooting them off where they shouldn't be, including our park.
Yes.
Where there were a lot of people. So we just, we wanna do this PSA. We prefer over here to deal with things in an educational manner before we drop hammers. So this is our educational manner. If you guys, if you have any questions or concerns, always you can talk to myself or either chiefs, because some portions of this is a fire chief issue and some is a police chief issue.
No, my question's already been answered at the beginning, which was how, since it was brought to council here, how much of this has been a problem? It sounds like it hasn't, it has been somewhat problematic, but been taken care of through educational intervention. My only response would be that there's learning that's taking place, and that the second and or third time someone does this, I think education becomes less of an issue. So that, that's something I'm sure you and chief are looking into and can make sure-
Yes, there are certain things that are straight up, they are a criminal violation. There are other things that are a civil violation, but failure to comply with that civil notice would then become a criminal violation.
Criminal offense, okay.
So, yeah, in some cases, the warning is, is your first lineup. You need to stop and don't do it again.
I have a question. Somebody in my neighborhood was shooting them off on the fourth, the night of the fourth, and the night of the fifth. It looked like it was about one street east of me, if you know where I live. Two days later, I went out to mow, and there was one in my yard.
Mm-hmm. Again, they're supposed to be leading them up, but they didn't have the distance to shoot. The only thing that was legal there was the day and time that they were discharging, not the location.
And that's the thing. I mean, we did have a pretty serious drought this summer for a month or two, and you can risk fires and injury to people's property on top of personal injury if you're too close to them.
Well, I'm sure they didn't figure it was gonna come clear over to my house right there either, the wind probably just caught it. But, yeah, I was mowing, and I looked down, and it was about that long.
Mm-hmm. Again, we'll, we'll take the complaints between the fire department and police department. We will handle those complaints, and hopefully we can prevent any injuries or property damage. That, that is our real goal, is keep people safe. We're not trying to stop them from enjoying themselves, we just want them to do it in a safe and legal manner.
And if they're discharging them indoors, they got bigger problems.
Yeah, it's amazing, but it did need to be listed. There, there actually is a process for indoor fireworks that does require special permits. There are specific types for shows, but it does take a licensed exhibitor for an indoor fireworks exhibit. And none of this is anything to do with the licensed exhibitors such as Dan Park, and that, that is a completely different section of the same code.
Which they give permits for and they work with fire.
It's a lengthy process, plus they are also licensed with the state for doing that, and carry insurance and a lot of other things.
Thank you, thanks chief. I appreciate that.
Okay, that completes our agenda, so we'll go around the room. And I will start with the mayor this time.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Hokey. First, I do wanna let you know, the committee for Friends of the EMS Levy have asked to give a PowerPoint presentation to council, so they will be coming to our August twenty-first meeting. They believe that presentation will take around fifteen minutes, and that's without questions. So just be prepared for that. And I do have that PowerPoint, so I'll probably put it in your packets that week as well, and then we'll have it here. So there should be some committee members coming to council for that, with the pretty close to the front of the meeting, if that's okay with you.
It doesn't run amok. Seems like there's something in my head that some other groups wanted to do that in the past, and we said no. Was there?
I don't think, like, we don't let political candidates come and speak.
Oh, maybe it was candidates.
But on issues, like when the school was doing their bond issue, they came to council. When there are levies, if they wanna do an informational-
Issues versus people makes sense to me, yeah.
Yes, issues, we do allow.
Yeah, okay.
Local issues, not statewide issues, if that makes sense. I also wanna congratulate and commend everyone that was on that committee of the Flare on the Square. That was an amazing downtown event that brought a lot of people, local and otherwise, that I believe was busy the entire twelve hours that it was going on, which I think is pretty remarkable. I went in the earlier hours because I had an evening commitment, but I heard the evening was even more crowded. So I just, I wanna commend that entire committee. They did a bang-up job from preparing, marketing, and promoting, and gathering, like, really talented artists locally and beyond. So I, I thought that, that was wonderful for our downtown. And then I do wanna remind everyone, there is a special election tomorrow, so if you have not already voted, please do go vote. I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
And nothing received.
Nothing.
Chief?
Set mine.
Okay. Street department?
No sir.
Engineering?
No sir.
Police? Parks? Wastewater? Okay. In that case, we'll start down here with Mary.
I would like to thank the Combs, Bryan Girls Softball Association and PTC, and like the mayor said, thank everyone who was involved at Flare on the Square. That was an excellent turnout.
John?
Yeah, I too would like to thank the Combs and the BGA, the Bryan Girls Softball Association, because the last, probably close to a decade, they have worked very hard in raising money and improving the facilities overall, which I believe have culminated in fairly decent runs the last number of years, very successful runs. So I wanted to make sure I stated that. Also, wanted to thank Powertrain, Jack, and their investment in Bryan to show continued business growth in Bryan. Also wanted to state to pretty much everybody, but engineering, zoning, streets, the sidewalks look great. There's always gonna be people who reach out and have questions, and that's fine, and have some issues that are respectfully conversed with, and that's fine. The but to it is, at the end of the day, Bryan has much safer routes for the kids to go to school, and the sidewalks look great. They don't look good, they look great. So I wanted to thank everybody who's been involved with that process. Also, thank you to the engineering department. They continue every year, just like a lot of our departments do, but it's very relevant now for applying for grants and application, which improves the Bryan infrastructure in terms of vast amounts of money that save the city of Bryan, therefore, the taxpayer of Bryan a ton. So thank you for, for that work that you guys do, that you people do. The new athletic facilities, if you have not seen those, specifically the turf right now at the football stadium, I would encourage you to check that out. That is also a Bryan community event. That is both residential people that are public citizens who gave, and also a number of corporations and businesses who gave of their money and time to make that happen. That also continues to draw people to Bryan. Also wanted to reiterate what the mayor stated. Please vote tomorrow if you have not already. It'll take somewhere between two and three minutes. So, okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yep.
Judy?
Basically the same thing. Thank you to the Combs for the new art gallery that's gonna go in. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. Always wanted to get money back, Bryan, when you come up with the decreases, that's always nice, makes us feel good. Thank you to the Girls Softball Association for their donation. That's gonna really add to that, and that's gonna help when, we have a lot of tournaments in, in this town, and that's gonna make a big difference for that. And if you haven't already done so, please vote.
Thank you, Judy. Jim?
Perfect. I'd like to thank the Combs as well, PTC for their investment, and the donation from the Bryan Girls Softball Association. I'd like to echo John's statement on the sidewalks. They, they, they do look great. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor, I understand you have something for-
Do you have one more thing, and I can't believe our Parks Director didn't catch me, but August nineteenth, this girl named Tom, the concert, we have been waiting for over a year. That starts at eight PM, and we have continued those safety meetings and public service meetings, and I'm really proud of our team, which consists of Ben Dominic, Chief Poole, Chief Ruski, Captain Mendez, Assistant Chief McLevy, and a number of county agencies and local law enforcement that are gonna be helping us. The United Way is gonna help out. Jeffrey Tandras has done a phenomenal job as our annual theater coordinator, putting all the pieces together. So we are ready to welcome the community and girl named Tom. We would ask that you register for your free ticket. Again, that's for us to make sure that we have enough first responders available, as well as water and food trucks for the day. But we're pretty excited, most of us, maybe not one. He hasn't quit yet. I expect it at midnight on August nineteenth. Anyway, we're, we're very excited to have them and welcome them back to northwest Ohio, and we hope that you join us for that day. Again, that's August nineteenth.
You register online? Is that what you-
Yeah, girl named Tom's website is supposed to put it up, but we also have that on Facebook, which I know you don't do, but it's an Eventbrite, so you can look on Eventbrite.com and register for your free tickets there. And again, we don't need them that day. It's just for us for our safety count.
Sure.
To make sure we have enough people to help out. And, and we've had great partnership with April McLean at EMA, and Jesse and Kyle from EMS, and County Sheriff's Department as well. So it's, it's been a really good time for all of us to be together and collaborate and talk about public safety, too. So it's been, we'll, we'll be pretty set if anything would ever happen in the community outside of that concert, because that's gonna go great. Chief Ruski, just in general, like, we've, we've all been working really well together on that partnership.
Do they have any idea, any clue how many-
About thirty-two hun- four, four thousand free tickets have been, have been sought out.
That's just online, that's not the people that-
Well, we kind of, without over-exaggerating, assume that might be double, based on the amount of people that don't know about the free tickets.
Well, that's, that's where I was going, is I was, I was gonna say, take whatever people have done online and take it times three.
We're not gonna triple that, because we all will hate the next day. But, but speaking to that, too, Mr. Betsch, you were talking the night before, like, it's a big weekend in Bryan, because the night before is the huge dedication of the football facilities.
Yeah.
It will be meet the teams night for all sports. We got a Dominic kid on field, on the turf, for the first time. It will be playing some really good ball. So we're pretty excited as a community to come together on the eighteenth. Pretty sure your wife and I will be in the concession stands together, or, yeah, probably. And then the nineteenth, following up with girl named Tom. So a great weekend in the Bryan community for you guys to come out and join. Carter won't mind at all that I mentioned, and he'll love it, show him the meeting. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's an exciting time. Few things that I have, I want to support thanking the Combs for their investment in the community, and I'm, I'm excited to see what they, what they have when they're all done. That should be a fun place to go and check out. Powertrain Components continues to, to reinvest in our community, and appreciate that. I wanna thank Chief Poole. That, I know a lot of work went into what you presented tonight, and I know I made a little light of things, but it is a very dangerous thing, and it, and not only personal safety, but also safety for people around and, and possible fires, things like that. And I wanna thank you for, for putting that together. The other thing that I do wanna mention, and I know it's hard to believe that our summer is coming to an end, but school will be starting soon. And so just reminding people that it won't be long, and those kids will be walking to school, and there will be school buses in places that they haven't been for a long time, and so just be very, very careful. We do have a much safer path to school now, but keep that in mind, that students are gonna be coming up to school before too long. And with that, I understand we do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion?
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.